I call the meeting to order. Good evening and welcome to the March 18th, 2024 study session for the Ashland City Council. Do we have any public input, Alyssa?
No.
Okay, great, thank you. We will move on then to our first order of business, which is the fire code update. Yes, before you get started while you're setting up, I just want to let everyone know that we have received word from the three councilors who are missing today that they would be unable to attend, but we still have quorum, so we're going forward with the study session as is.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Mark Shea, your Fire Marshal with Ashland Fire and Rescue. I'm going to discuss the fire code update this evening. Our presentation will go over each of the changes to the fire code, and I'll review those briefly with you. After the review of the fire code changes, then we'll do a brief discussion of the accomplishments of that I've made so far as Fire Marshal. So, beginning in section three of the updated fire code, we added a definition of fire prevention organization. The term comes from the NFPA 1710 standard that we'll discuss later on, but essentially the fire prevention organization here is the Fire and Life Safety Division, Wildfire Community Risk Reduction Division for Ashland Fire and Rescue and myself, the Fire Marshal. So that is kind of the basic of this definition. Continuing on in section six, we've changed from the 2019 edition to the 2022 edition of the Oregon Fire Code, which is the most current edition of the Oregon Fire Code. So we're updating editions there and reflecting that. We are removing section S regarding mobile and temporary cooking operations. We're doing that because previously the code referenced NFPA 1, the national standard. Since then, the state of Oregon and the Oregon Fire Code has adopted section 319 in the Oregon Fire Code, which regulates mobile and temporary food cooking operations. So we don't need to point to a separate standard or regulation now. We can look straight to the Oregon Fire Code, which we're adopting. And those regulations, those standards are the same, so we are not reducing our level of safety or coverage here. Continuing on, section A, under, excuse me, section 13 subsection A, references that we will be looking to NFPA 1730, which has a really long title. That's the Standard on Organization and Deployment of Fire Prevention, Inspection and Code Enforcement, Plan Review, Investigation, and Public Education Operations. Essentially, this is the national standard for fire prevention, public education, and fire inspections. And we're pointing to that national standard as our guiding light, as the standard that we are going to use for these for these things in Ashland. Continuing, also in section 13, "City of Ashland shall maintain a written statement or policy that establishes the following: Existence of the FPO." The FPO, remember from the definition, is the fire prevention organization or our division. Services that the FPO will provide. Basic organizational structure. Expected number of FPO members. Functions that FPO members are expected to perform. So, these documents already exist within Ashland Fire and Rescue and within our job descriptions, so we already are in compliance with this section. Continuing on in section 13, "Our general requirements: Fire prevention, inspection, and code enforcement services, including department personnel, equipment, and all support and resources shall be structured to meet the organizational objectives." This goes on to say that "we will conduct fire inspections to the fire code and adopted standards." And that personnel that will be conducting fire inspections will meet the minimum standards in the state of Oregon and the national standard NFPA 1710. That's referenced near the bottom, NFPA 1031, which is the minimum standard for fire prevention personnel, and then Oregon Administrative Rule 837-039-0016, which is the Oregon minimum standard for fire personnel conducting fire inspections. Continuing on in section 13 subsection D provides the minimum inspection frequency that we are targeting, and that's based upon occupancy classifications. High occupancy classifications will be completed at a target of annually. Example of high occupancy or high-risk occupancy, excuse me, would be hospitals, the hospital, schools, nursing home, any place where either there's a large number of persons gathered or persons that are gathered cannot be expected to take care of themselves. So, a hospital, a school with multiple children, or any any business with high-risk processes, so lots of hazardous materials, anything that that might contribute to rapid fire growth. We'll target those annually. Every two years, we'll target moderate-level occupancies, and those would be a storage warehouse, for example, a business that produces products that are relatively low-risk, low-fire hazard. And then every three years, low-risk occupancies. So, an example of a low-risk occupancy would be the building that we're in. Stores downtown, business offices, those would be the more low-risk occupancies. So, I will target those every three years. That concludes the update on the the fire code, and I'll transition into the Fire Marshal review unless there's questions regarding the fire code.
Yeah, Council Dale.
Thank you, Mayor. I think if you scroll down, there's just one that says "critical infrastructure per the city of Ashland," underneath that, at least in the packet here. You had high, moderate, low, then critical infrastructure per the city of Ashland. Can you give examples of those?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I apologize.
No, no problem at all.
So, critical infrastructure would be, for example, water treatment plant, sewage treatment plant, power-related facilities.
And what would be an interval for those?
An interval for those, those would be at minimum annually, based on risk that we find initially, or that I would find initially, that might move to twice a year, but initially annually.
Thank you.
Moving on to what I've done, what I've accomplished over the last four months of employment as your Fire Marshal. I began reviewing building plans for fire code-related requirements. This is looking specifically at building plans that are submitted to our city, ensuring that they meet applicable fire code requirements, and ensuring that fire sprinkler plans, fire alarm plans, again, are are code compliant. This year, I've completed 14 of those building plan reviews. I've also began reviewing land development pre-applications for fire department and access water supply considerations. I've completed 12 of those land use plan reviews this year. I've worked cooperatively with community development and finance to institute a business license review process by Ashland Fire and Rescue. What this does is, by allowing the Fire Marshal to get an initial review of business licenses, we can ensure code compliance early. We can make sure that there aren't any issues with maybe a business moving into a building that is not, that they're not compliant to be in, based on the use. I've completed 25 of the business license application reviews this year. I've conducted fire and life safety inspections as well as fire code consultations by request, so business owners, other city departments. This year, we've conducted 46 to date. I've worked to implement the FirstView and Community Connect software for the fire department. This software platform is the software that we use for employee scheduling, pre-incident planning, fire inspections, permit issuance. We use it for a wide range, wide range of issues, and Community Connect, which is part of FirstView, is the community's ability to, that's essentially the community portal to provide information, critical information, to emergency services. So, homeowners can enter information like their contact information, pets, disabilities, anything that they feel is important for us to know. And I've worked to get that software implemented within the fire department and have also collaborated with other local fire departments so that we can share information if we need mutual aid assistance, and, for example, Jackson County Fire District 5 comes in to our city to help, they can see that same information. So they're at the same advantage as we are to serve the citizens. We've also shared the information with Ashland Police so that we're, again, all on the same page, and if the police department wants to see the information, they have the ability to do that as well. As far as Community Connect, this year, we've had 175 citizens sign up for Community Connect to date. I'm in the process of instructing the Oregon State Fire Marshal Company Inspector Curriculum to all staff for Ashland Fire and Rescue and Jackson County Fire District 5. We talked earlier on the code review about all inspectors meeting the minimum standard nationally and in Oregon. This is the minimum standard for an engine company crew to conduct a fire inspection at what would be the low-risk occupancies we talked about. So those business offices, small stores, that kind of thing. So we're working to get all of our staff certified to that level. I'm working to build the Wildfire Community Risk Reduction Division. As the leader of the division, taking time to build relationships with my staff, I've implemented monthly staff meetings where we can share information, share goals, and I've implemented monthly one-on-one meetings with each of the staff to further develop I've taken on management oversight of large projects, including the Community Wildfire Protection Plan and the Ashland Wildfire Mitigation Plan, which is our FEMA grant, and overseeing the execution of those projects. I've spent time building relationships throughout the city, both with internal city partners and the business community, and working to to build those relationships. Moving forward, looking to implement proactive fire and fire safety inspections by community risk division staff, so myself and the Fire and Life Safety Specialist, which will be conducting the higher level or the more complex fire inspections. We'll be implementing engine company-level fire safety inspections, so those are the less complex inspections. Going to make sure to gather relevant data to assist with community risk reduction. I want to make sure that we are, the tasks that we're undertaking are true risks in Ashland, and that we are focusing our time and attention on what are true risks so that we can reduce them. I'm going to provide continued leadership to the Wildfire Community Risk Reduction Division staff and ensure efficiency and effectiveness with related programs and processes within the division. Any questions?
Questions, Council Hyatt.
First, thank you. I am super glad you are here. So I know from when I first sat down in this chair, it has been a road. So, seeing this presentation here tonight and having you here and helping our community in the ways that you are, are sincerely appreciated, and I am grateful. My question is really one kind of umbrella question, probably two parts underneath it, and that is, with the work that you're putting forward on the fire code and the accomplishments that you've helped us understand here, how do you feel with regard to preparation for the ISO review in May?
I feel like we're doing well. We have some work to do, but it's work that we can accomplish.
Excellent, thank you.
Council Catherine.
Yes, again, I'd like to echo Council Hyatt's welcome and appreciation of you being here. A couple of, just a couple of questions. I'm interested in the Community Connect, and you said, I think, 175 have signed up to date. I'm wondering if that's the pace of signup that you expected, or whether you're expecting that pace to pick up. We've got almost 10,000 households. Seems like we'd want, we've got a long way to go getting people to sign up. So I wonder if what sort of plans you have to increase the pace of that, or if that's kind of what you expect based on other other locations. And the other question is, you listed a number of accomplishments in the last few months, and I'm wondering if, at least on the first slide, you cited some numbers for several of the indicators, and I'm wondering if those are kind of a normalized level that you'd expect going forward, or is that some sort of a hump that you're kind of dealing with in these first several months, and then it's going to tail down to a different kind of level of workload?
On Community Connect, I feel like 175 at this point is a good number. We began our marketing campaign mid-February. My goal is to make this a long-term campaign. I realize that there's a long way to go with it. We'd like a lot more folks signed up. We started the campaign with a letter, or, excuse me, an article within the city newsletter. We had an article within ashland.news. We pushed it out on social media. I did a couple of radio interviews. We're going to continue that push really every few months. As the attention kind of fades away from it, if you will, we're going to bring that attention back. We also have created business card-sized cards with a QR code on it that we can hand out to businesses, we can hand out at events where we're providing public education. We're going to have those on our fire engines and ambulances, so when crews meet with the public on a call, they can leave the card there, and it's an easier way for for citizens to sign up. We're also collaborating with the senior center to make sure that that demographic who might not have access to computers or the use of technology, that they've got some assistance to sign up. As with the numbers, my estimation is that that's probably what we're going to continue to look like, especially with the planner views for both building plan reviews and land use. Fire inspections, I would expect with the implementation of the inspection programs for both fire and life safety staff and engine companies, I would expect those numbers to increase.
Great, thank you. Maybe another outlet, sorry, Mayor.
Go ahead.
Maybe another outlet for getting the word out on the Community Connect would be the school system, having kids take it home to their parents.
Yeah, great idea. Thank you.
Council Dale.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, Mark, welcome. Glad to have you. This is awesome. This is wonderful. The question, I'm just going to kind of put you on the spot a little bit here, is you've got your work cut out for you on the on the items you just talked about. Is there anything on the flip side that we as a council or the community could do to help you and help move through those items? Is there anything that the city of Ashland, the citizens of Ashland, you'd like them to know to help you help us?
I would say the, just continuing the support. I know that before I arrived, council and city management has provided a tremendous amount of support to to the fire department, and we appreciate that, and I would say continuing that support. And as far as the community, just understanding that with a fire inspection, most businesses aren't looking forward to regulation. My goal is to be business-friendly, and I'd like the community to know that we're here to make you safer, not necessarily another level of regulation.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you, and I echo my fellow councilors' welcome. We have, it has been a source of great concern to me to not have this program up and running for the last couple of years, because we know that in times of extreme fire danger, it doesn't matter where the fire starts. And the line between wildland and urban fires is is not really a line anymore. And so having you come on and and your work with the team is really important. One of the questions that I have is, we tend to to think about a typical fire situation in town. We tend to lump all fire into there, but we know that if, say, my house catches on fire, that's one type of situation, and if we have an Almeida situation, that's something completely different. And at that point, we are now dealing with emergency services, we're dealing with an entire nether level of emergency response. And so one of my questions to you is, what, to what extent is, now that we've got you in place, is your team working with our emergency coordinator to to work through what are those things that, so that the people of Ashland are getting a consistent message about what all they need to sign up for, what do they need to do around their homes, all of those things? I know that our emergency services section is putting out a lot of really good information for people, so how is that coordination going?
Coordination's going very well. Our staff works with Kelly Burns, our emergency manager, on a regular basis, coordinating messages both on the wildfire safety front and even the the fire code front. So Kelly and our team work seamlessly together and have integrated well.
Great. And then another question I have, when I was on the Wildfire Safety Commission, one of the questions that came up was how to address the lands that are inside our urban growth boundary but are not inside the city limits, so they're still officially in the county. And so we were not able at that point to to enforce any sort of weed ordinances or any hazardous fuel ordinances. And so I know that you've only been here a little bit of time in terms of this role, but can you speak to whether this council, or whether we have an issue that we need to take up with the county commissioners in terms of being able to protect our community from things that are happening on property that's out in the county?
Not being educated on specifics right outside of Ashland, I can't give a an answer on specific properties or specific problems. In general, in my experience in Jackson County, I do know that there are different regulations within cities and the county area. I would anticipate that the problem would continue to occur and that we would have a lack of regulation of, for example, tall weeds and grass on vacant properties within adjoining county properties because of the lack of regulation or the lack of ordinance within the county on that.
Okay, thank you. I, yeah, I'm particularly interested in the in those areas that we haven't annexed in yet but are clearly in the future space of the community, and so I will look into that a little bit further, and I may reach out to you to have an offline conversation. Because certainly if there's a role for this council to to play in that larger wildfire risk reduction effort, we want to make sure that we are doing our part here. Are there any additional questions for Mark? Okay, great. Again, welcome and thank you so much for your good work.
Thank you.
And we move on now to our next agenda item, which is the City Forestlands Climate Adaptation Project. And for anyone who is here to speak on this issue, please make sure that you fill out a form on the side. And Alyssa, would you raise your hand? Alyssa needs to receive your form. Please make sure that you indicate what you are here to speak on behalf, on for, so that we can make sure that we get you up at the right time.
Should I speak in full words?
It'll be after.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor, Council. Good to be here again. Chris Chambers, forestry officer. We're keeping it all in the family here today, same, working under Fire Marshal mark as the, as our division has transitioned to a new staffing model. So I'm excited to be here to talk about an incredibly important topic to the community and give an update on previous presentation to council and the approval of a contract with Lomacatzi Restoration, which happened back in November, December, and has since largely been implemented. And we will get an update from Lomacatzi on their work there here, and also a cameo from Marty Main, who was the city's contracted forester for about 25 years, up until a couple of years ago, just for some perspective on this issue. I want to start off talking about the context of this, and maybe something I didn't do last time we covered this topic, but the city has a long history of engaging with our forests, back actually until, since the late 1800s, when the city lobbied to get protection for the Ashland Municipal Watershed before the U.S. Forest Service even existed. Now, since then, things have certainly evolved in a lot of different ways in our work with the Forest Service and the AFR project, and ecologically, things have also evolved. And I want to underscore that things have fundamentally shifted under our feet in just the last decade. A lot of the discussions that we've had around forests, in some ways, don't apply anymore. Things are happening in forests across the West that nobody ever thought would happen. Forests are completely vanishing. This quote from one of the lead scientists from the Nature Conservancy in Arizona, where in the Southwest, they have lost hundreds of thousands of acres of forests that now have turned into grasslands and shrublands permanently. That wasn't part of the conversation even a decade ago, and certainly not when we conceived of the Ashland Forest Resiliency Project and/or started managing the city's forestlands back in 1995, when Marco started, Markey, Marty, excuse me, started. I've got, we've got Marco coming on as well. So that, the discussion is fundamentally different, and the challenge for me as staff representing the city and seeing all of these things actually happening out in the forest, reading a lot of science behind the scenes, is how do we evolve the conversation with council here? How do we evolve the conversation with the public so that people can grasp what is happening? And of course, you know, our lived experience here in Ashland has changed in the last 10 years with smoky summers, you know, of having a couple of major wildfires cause evacuations, well, actually, three major wildfires caused evacuations inside our own city limits, losing homes in the Oak Knoll Fire, and of course, everybody witnessing what happened during the Almeida Fire and the devastation, and the city coming this close to losing hundreds and hundreds of homes and potentially businesses as well. What's happening in our forests in an ecological sense, in a similar vein, we are, we are not in Kansas anymore. The level of insect activity in our forests, if you just kind of pay attention to the trends, this chart goes all the way back to the 1940s, and this is aerial surveys done by the U.S. Forest Service, tracking the amount of insect die-off there is from left to right. You can see just the last two years, a huge spike orders of magnitude over what we've ever seen in our local forests in terms of damage done by bark beetles. Yes, Council?
Sorry, sorry, just a clarification. I can't, I can't see the legends, so I'm wondering if you could just explain to us what the different colors mean? just explain to us what the different colors mean?
I have to take my notes. Oh, yeah, the legend are, is the intensity of the outbreak. So it goes from very light to very severe. In the past, it's been predominantly light mortality, and all the color you see to the right is increasing severity. So it's not just the number of acres and the, and how tall the bars are, but it's also the intensity of the outbreak and how many trees per acre are being impacted. So I think this tells a story that we are fundamentally not in the same place we were in talking about what's happening in our forests 10 years ago. And of course, the issue of fire follows in the, and threat to the community follows closely behind that. I'm going to play just 30 seconds of a video here that's produced by the Era of Megafires folks, which was, is led by a really top-notch scientist, Paul Hesberg, who is really a giant in the field of fire ecology, to understand how it is that the conditions in our forests affect the safety of our community.
Let's say a wildfire is burning in a nearby
Oop, is there any way to get that volume to be, can I control that? Let's see.
Great question.
Oh, it's 100 there. Ah, there we go. Hopefully that will do it.
Is that doing anything? I don't know.
...forest or shrub step and is now racing towards your community.
A little bit.
You might be thinking that as long as your house isn't on the edge of town, you don't have
Let me see if I can start it again. Now that we can hear it all, and I'll summarize it.
Here it comes.
Ah, okay, it was that one.
Yeah, whoever found the volume.
For some reason, it is not letting me restart it.
First, it's not a wall of flames from a wildfire that's most likely to threaten your home. It's the millions of embers that are carried on wind that are your main concern. High winds can actually drive these burning embers up to five miles ahead of the flames. They can then land on your roof and your leaf-filled gutters, socked into attic venting, or night hedges, wood piles, or outbuildings near your home. Secondly,
All right, this goes into the, more into the details of how to prepare your property. The point being that these two issues are not separated, and there's definitely an effort to try to separate them and say, we don't need to do work in our forests, and we need to do everything in our community. These things are inextricably linked. A fire in our forests directly impacts survivability of homes, and though we have worked on education and continue to do that, we have our FEMA grant, we have a lot of work that's happening to educate the public about how to clean up their properties and not have the leaves in their gutters, we are a long way from getting to that point where embers would not impact the city. And I would say it would be our goal to never have that happen, if at all possible. That causes a lot of exposure to citizens, a lot of evacuation hazards as houses start to burn, as vegetation starts to burn. That can happen all over our community. The video talked about five miles that embers can travel. I did five miles, and that was the entire city. Three miles is this buffer from the project area that we're talking about. So embers potentially cast from city and parks' forestlands could blanket the community in a radius of three miles. Certainly, this issue has got the interest of researchers, and there's a lot of lived experience out there in the Western United States. Dr. Scott Stevens wrote a great paper in 2018, talking about the risks as communities start to face forest mortality and the mass die-off of trees, similar to what we're seeing, and ours is still getting worse. But looking at all this, the research, he, his observations are that we vastly underestimate the power of fire and what it can do to communities and the forestlands themselves. And I hope that we are not under, ending up on the underestimation side of this issue. Unfortunately, we have inherited forests that are really prone to these severe disturbances like wildfire and insect outbreaks, forests that are really overly dense and really prone to both the fire and the insect issues. What is projected to still come down the pipe in the future? This is a map of what's called climatic water deficit, which is used as a proxy to predict where species like Douglas fir might survive into the future. Douglas fir being one of the dominant tree species we have in our entire watershed, and the lower areas next to town. This is Siskiyou Mountain Park. All of the red area is where Douglas fir will no, potentially no longer exist, according to this model, by the year 2055. And there's a little stronghold left or a refugia where the green triangle is. But we have to accept that our forests are changing quickly, like right under our feet, right before our eyes, and it's going to be a challenge to keep up on the management side, and it's an equal challenge to keep up, keeping the public informed as to what is happening, what is the fire risk, and what we should do about it. So there's more of that to come. We will probably have this conversation again.
Chris, Chris, before you move on,
Yeah.
When you're looking at the representative concentration pathway of 8.5, have we, do we have the same information for comparisons with 4.5, or, you know, any, any of the pathways where we get our act, we get our act together on some level on emissions? Does it still look this, this red?
I would imagine not that red. I haven't seen those numbers, though. This is just what is available from a study about the Douglas fir die-off that's happening.
Right, right. So I think, just so everyone understands what the RCP means, the 8.5 is the scenario where we continue with emissions as they, as we are continuing right now. So this, this would be, we think, the worst-case scenario until feedback loops start rolling in that we can't predict. Yes?
That would be a safe assumption.
Okay, thank you.
That is your world more than it is mine, so you're the expert. At this point, I want to call up Marty Main for just some perspective on where we have come and his take. Marty, as I've mentioned, has been, had been the city's forester for about 25 years, has done extensive work on city forests, or on private forestlands all throughout southwest Oregon, and also importantly, put together the scientific literature search that we started out this journey based on. And that led to the 2023 climate change addendum to the Ashland Forest Plan, a process that Marty was still involved in. So he, more than anybody, understands the scientific underpinnings of what's happening with climate change and how that's altering our forests, and of course, his first historic perspective on what has happened on city forestlands. Thank you, Marty.
Thank you, Chris, and thanks to all you folks. I first came in this role in 1995. I've seen a lot of different councils, and I really appreciate people willing to take on the job, so I want to pass that on to all of you here. It's been quite an evolution. I'm just going to say a few words that Chris asked me to, based on my experience, and I've been working as a private consulting and contracting forest and resource management specialist for 43 years. I'm still kind of in business, but I'm kind of trying to get out a little bit. I still have some clients in the, in the Ashland watershed area, private. I've worked with about 400 different types of landowners. By and large, I started out with an idea that trying to do ecologically sensitive work. At the time, in 1980, you didn't see much of that on the landscape. And so, I've watched this evolution over time, and I'm really, it's, it's been great to see the evolution, not only on the ground, but in groups like this, council, and the amount of knowledge that you all have and the public. So each client I work with is different. I've worked with, like I said, many, many different ones, who have done agency work and multiple situations, multiple landscape situations. Each situation is different. In the city, I worked for 28 years, my business, Small Woodland Services, helping the city achieve their objectives. So how do you do that? How do you try to achieve all these objectives on a particular landscape with a particular owner? Basically, I've always tried to look at it in several ways, and one of them is spatially. You can't achieve objectives on every inch of every ground. You try to maximize the benefits over time and space. And so, that's how we've done it with, on city lands and on all the lands that I've worked with. The big wrinkle that we've got thrown here recently is extended drought over the last 10 years and the intersection with climate change. And there's a lot of discussion going on. The last year or two with, that I worked with Chris and the city and the Forest Lands Commission, I really focused on climate change specifically for the city of Ashland. And what, what, how would the city respond? Most of the research looks at big-scale stuff, you know, agency, regional. How does an individual landowner deal, what do they do to deal with these realities? Well, the first thing is to prioritize your, your objectives, and that changes with space and time. And on the city ownership, it changes with space and time. The city has ownerships right up next to the adjacent city limits. Some of the clients I work with, same thing. It goes all the way up to the middle of the watershed. So it changes because of that. The city, in my estimation, over time, has had a unique role to play, different than any other ownership. It's fairly large ownership, non-federal agency ownership, but given the type of community we have here in Ashland, the players and the concern have been able to respond quickly, more so than other ownerships. And as a result, we've seen the city reflect the historic disturbance regimes, by disturbance I mean fire or wind or whatever else it is that happened for millennia prior to European settling. And it was frequent, low to moderate severity disturbance. We've brought that on the city forward by doing a lot of work frequently, over and over again, and trying to achieve these multiple objectives. So the current situation is one where we've got a tremendous amount of cumulative stress in the forests. There's a historical basis for that, since the time of European settling and what we've done with our forests. There's the current condition that we're looking at right now, and there's where we're going in the future. Each of those deserve a lot of attention. You guys are in the middle of it. My hat's off to you. I hope you can go home and sleep at night. It's really challenging, challenging situation. So, but in effect, what we're looking at is elevated amounts of cumulative stress. There's always stress in the forest. It's an important, healthy thing to happen, but our past management and our current situation with drought and/or climate change has elevated the amount of stress out there that we feel in the forest. And so, Chris made reference to making appropriate changes, given this newer operating situation that we're in. I love that piece of ground up there that the city has. It's helped me to do things that I wouldn't be able to do otherwise because I'm so attached to it. And I, I think the city had, has been able to hang on to that, not only with its public people and the people working on it. It's a real powerful thing to have. So that, I'm, I'm certainly willing to answer any questions that might come up either now or later on this evening, whatever.
Thank you, Marty.
Councillor Dale?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick question. Thank you so much. I mean, I think that, you know, as I was listening to you, you reflect on 40 some-odd years of being up there, and it's, I know I speak for a lot of people here, most people, that that is a huge part of a life and our soul and who, what it means, and the word that I kept coming back to as you were speaking was just love of the forest and protection. I'm looking through the addendum, which is a fantastic document. I did come across one, one statement that I was hoping you might be able to clarify. I think I know the answer to this, but I'd like to hear from you. Under, under, what was it? Under the Section 3(c) under carbon sequestration and storage, there's a bullet point that says, "Though the Ashland Climate Energy Action Plan calls for carbon neutrality, we recognize that this may not be possible on city forestlands. Were goals of community wildfire safety and maintaining forested ecosystems intact are higher priorities?" Now, I know that we have a lot of comprehensive plans and other projects and so forth, and they don't click perfectly together, but I think that that might be something that may need a little bit further explanation for those that might question that conflict there and what we're trying to achieve.
Yeah, okay. Well, I'll give you the short version.
Sure.
And if you want the long version, we'll go get a beer or something for a couple of weeks.
Don't tell me.
But there's a lot of good people in town that would give you answers to, but I think my, my immediate response there is, boils down to, if, 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 if carbon sequestration and storage were our only issue, no multiple values, but if our only one, we would grow all the vegetation we could, and it would sequester the maximum amount of carbon. We know that's not how forests work. Forests are in a constant evolution of growth and death, and it's constant, it's been going on for millennia, and humans have had a big role in that process for as far, as far back as we can think. And so, so here we are, and our goals are not just to sequester all the carbon we can, although that's a noble goal, but we have to look at the other values. And I would say that there's places on the city ownership where you could probably raise up the value of doing sequestration and storage, but in other places where one of the outcomes of drought and climate change is elevated fire and wildfire. And so, in those locations, that you would tamp down the carbon sequestration, immediate short-term goal, and think long-term, we do not want to have a sudden pulse of big fire for a lot of, a lot of the values that we treasure. And so, you know, there's no silver bullet here, but you make those adjustments as you can as a land manager.
Perfect, spot on. Thank you so much.
I have just a question. Good to see you, Marty. And this is one that, that Chris, I posed by email ahead of time. When we, when we think of forest processes and systems, one of the things that we know that has a lot of value in it is standing dead trees. So for snags, for habitat, and then also, at some point, when eventually they fall, they, they bring other habitat benefits, and not, you know, not, least of which is, is regeneration for the soil, shade for the soil, that sort of thing. So when we think about these extreme heat situations, which are part of what's causing, you know, this, this drought situation is not, is not just less water, but it's higher heat. And so, how does that work with the, the contract that we put in place earlier to go and mark these? What, what is that ratio? What are we leaving there, still standing? What are we leaving on the ground? And how do we balance those, what seem to be opposing needs? One of which is to sweep all, all, everything that's burnable out of the forest, and the other one is to make sure that we maintain components for soil and wildlife health.
If you want to hold on to that, and we can invite Marty back up then, I have three slides on that coming up.
Okay.
Showing the exact plans that Lomacazzi implemented, and then some of the values with wildlife habitat and how we try to balance those really competing issues that are at odds.
And I will add just a little bit here. One of the things that former fire chief Keith Woodley, in 2000, he instructed my business to go in and put 206 permanent plots business to go in and put 206 permanent plots on city ownership, which we did. We marked where they were, and we revisited those now three different times to quantify those changes. And one of the things that we did was collect information on large woody debris and snags so we could say, these are the changes that are going on. So we had something to stand on other than just arm waving. And that data is so interesting. And there is a big difference between the large woody debris next to the city in the lower watershed and the large woody debris that is up in the middle of the watershed on the windburn parcel on city ownership. And the data is very, very clear. And so that kind of information, which is totally unique in Southern Oregon, to have that length of data, of good, solid data about an ownership, is just priceless. And so I, I mean, Chris has some information about that, and I'd add a little bit just from my experience. But that data might really help on snags per acre and on large woody debris, old large woody debris versus new. And just for you, Tanya, it's really interesting on the lower watershed, there's no large woody debris. The data very clearly, we couldn't find it. So that is usually one of the indications that there weren't older forests. That's usually what it means, because nothing grew to a size to become large woody debris. So these are really different types of forests at lower and upper parts of the city with a data set. So...
So if we do have more slides, thank you. If we do have more slides, let's go ahead and keep going. I didn't realize that we had sort of, I thought that was it.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. And I'm going to try to answer some of the questions also that came through email, and this was one of them from Counselor Kaplan, about what we're doing to notify the residents of what is proposed to take place in hosting a helicopter thinning project where we'll remove a lot of dead and dying trees, leaving enough for habitat. And this is a long list of all of the things, apparently I didn't finish a sentence at the end, that we have done since we started down the pathway of doing the climate adaptation addendum. Multiple public tours have been done for that and this current project. A lot of media has been done. There's a current piece circulating in the city utility build newsletter right now to all households in Ashland. We've done outreach at trailheads. We've done outreach at the farmer's market. And all the public meetings that we've gone through, processes and public comments, we've taken input on the plan itself that's proposed to be implemented. Input was incorporated into the plan. That definitely made it for the better. There's a project website. There's going to be an interactive trail GIS map that is already finished and ready to go and about to be launched. Still, we will never get to everybody out there, and I'm sure there will be some discontent as trails start to close and access is limited for three to four weeks. But I think that's a small price to pay for the health of our landscape and the safety of our community. But nonetheless, we are pulling out all the stops and trying to get the word out, including, I was just contacted today by the New York Times, who wants to write a piece about Douglas fir die-off in Oregon, and they want to feature our work. So we'll get a larger, a lot larger audience than we really needed to get the word out to. But nonetheless, I'm sure a lot of people do read the New York Times in Ashland. If there are any ideas that we could implement to get the word out there, I would be more than happy to try to accomplish that in what time we have as staff to make this happen. And I will talk to Emergency Manager Kelly Burns about using our community alert system to let people know about the closures. And of course, actually seeing a helicopter right above town could be alarming to people if they didn't know that it was planned. So all that is part of the public engagement ongoing and to come. Any questions on that specifically?
I did, yeah. Well, thanks, Chris. And I know that you've done a lot, and I wouldn't have, you know, articulate all this, items on the list. But what I was really referring to is with this specific timeframe, a lot of this happened, you know, earlier on, a couple of months ago, it's kind of theoretical what exactly when it's going to happen. And what I'm really looking for is how are you getting the word out to people that next week or two weeks from now or three weeks from now, this is what's going to happen? And so, you know, some of those things that you have pointed to were down the list, you know, are going to that. Items, articles in national.news, if you was doing something, JPR, some of the growers' market was, you know, sometime last season, wasn't really action oriented towards this. So I just urge you to try to keep people from being surprised when they see this happening. You know, there are signs up in the watershed, but there are people that...
Don't read the signs.
They've missed them, you know?
Exactly. We'll do everything we can. I hope the citizen alert message would really get people's attention, because that's a pretty important one. And we'll certainly use city website and social media as well. Okay, thank you. Okay, just, I'll try to breeze through the rest of this as quickly as possible. There's going to be a tendency for people to feel like they see a lot of marked and/or cut trees, because people inherently walk along trails in the watershed. That's what we all do. At the same time, because people walk on trails and because trails exist in the watershed, we actually have to prioritize safety on the trails. So there's going to be heavier cutting around the trails for trail safety. So as Lomakazi was out there evaluating trees, they looked at tree heights, they looked at distances, and they marked trees that were going to hit trails. So that's going to cause people, as they, you know, see the marking out there now, and eventually as they see cut trees, that their experience is probably going to be an oversampling of the work done out there. And it's just one of those things that we, it's difficult to try to explain that to everybody who feels like we cut way too many trees. But at the same time, the impact of recreation on ecology should not be underestimated in many different ways. And there's a whole another conversation to be had in the future about that. But this is one of those items. But because we have the biking and hiking trails that we do, that everybody loves, and there's a great reason to live in Ashland and visit here, we have to accept that that is going to have ecological impacts. And this is one example in having to remove wildlife habitat for public safety along trails and roads as well. Same thing applies on the Ashland watershed side. This is Siskiast Mountain Park. It's even more trees and even more trails on the other side in the lower watershed as well. So I just want to point that out and put it on the table that it will look like there are a lot of trees cut because we walk on trails, and there are going to be more trees cut along trails.
So Chris, those marked trees, will they be visibly dying to most people who see them?
Yeah, the trail trees especially. And I'll talk a little bit about the marking results. They will see green trees marked, but the trail trees are disproportionately dead and dying. Yeah.
Counselor Hyatt?
Are the greener trees the ones that are susceptible to the bark beetle?
They are indeed. All Douglas fir in this whole project area is really susceptible. We'll see what happens this spring. There was this huge wave of die-off as we went, came out of the spring, and trees came out of dormancy and realized that beetles had eaten away their cambium layer. And as they woke up from dormancy, they were dead essentially. So that is likely to happen to some degree again this year. Forest Service entomologists locally say that could be anywhere from 20% to 60% more than what we have seen in this last year. I hope it's on the lower end. We've tried to anticipate some of that, but to really anticipate all of it and say, let's just preemptively cut all the Doug fir that are at high risk, we wouldn't have hardly any Doug fir left.
And what's the plan? I think if memory serves, and correct me if I'm wrong, the last time you had to navigate a parcel with bark beetle, you went to great lengths to ensure that there wasn't additional spread on account of the work that was being done. Is that possible in a landscape like this?
Not now. The pressure is so, that we call, and it's even in the science literature, the beetle pressure is so high now, there are so many trees infested out there that everywhere is susceptible. Yes, we can do thinning, and we can do actions that minimize the risk, but the risk is still going to be there, and it's still going to be high either until we have successive years with really high rainfall and to really push us out of this drought cycle and the beetles start losing out to the trees. But as of right now, the trees are still losing out to the beetles.
Thank you, Chris.
So Chris, following on behind Counselor Hyatt's question, that, I think, is going to create this question of why are we marking any green trees? If all of them are susceptible and we see the ones that are dying, I think that's what people are going to notice is, well, but I get the dead ones, but what about the live ones? What is the rationale behind marking green trees?
I shall let Marty answer that because he has more recent experience on private land in doing that work, and also a long history on city land. And it is involved in one of the decision options that you'll be presented with to decide tomorrow is which level investment to make in the contract. And that does involve one section of city land that is predominantly greener trees.
Yeah, so that's, you know, a fundamental question that's been around for a long time in Ashland and with the owners, various private owners that I've worked with. It's, you know, why cut the green trees? Well, it's a big topic. From my perspective, we had historic forests that had thinning going on forever with frequent fire. That was, you know, for millennia, and trees died as a result. And so the idea is that you have a finite amount of site resources, and you've got various amounts of vegetation, whether it's grass, shrubs, trees, that utilize those resources. And the resources, particularly water is the limiting one, particularly at lower elevations in Southern Oregon. And so fewer vegetation, more water for the ones that are left, and hence more vigor. So that's been the general thinking about applying a strategy of using thinning, manual thinning rather than fire, like historic, to reduce the density of the vegetation and let the water and nutrients be spread out and create a more vigorous stand. The city inherited stands. When I came on board, we did our, we did our first thinning, and I just said to the Fire Chief, I don't know if this is going to work. And he said, well, thanks for your expertise. But it was true, I didn't. That stand had been there at that point for 90 years without any disturbance. That's unheard of in historical analogs. There was always disturbance reducing densities. So could we go in and where and when could we do this work? And so over time, we've developed some professional thoughts and expertise as to when and where. And then we get thrown the curve with extended drought and climate change looking forward. Well, that really complicates the picture. But nonetheless, the basic thought that stands had had and vegetation, not just trees, but vegetation, that we're used to having much more open conditions and spreading the water and nutrients to create more vigorous vegetation was, is pretty well understood. So I did, I set up and worked on a private parcel right next to city lands this year, and my struggle was can thinning work here? And it was a little bit higher elevation, so a little bit less temperature, a little bit more moisture. We have a really steep environmental gradient from Ashland to Mount Ashland. It goes from 20 to 60 inches of rain in just eight miles. It's really amazing. So we have this chronology for this landscape that has this variation. And so I had to say, do I think there's a possibility that these forests would have enough resilience in them at this elevation and in this timeframe to maybe counteract the intensity of the beetles? We know somewhere in that, in that thing, that the forest will do have the vigor and the beetles will lose it. We know. And so I said, let's give it a try. And so we did. It's actually a toothpick trail. Those of you that hike toothpick trail, you know that there was some work done there, and we did thin there. We really did thin green trees and some dead trees. It was the same issue Chris was talking about with hazard. Private landowners even much more concerned about hazard for liability reasons than a city. So, you know, we tried to create the safest possible conditions for people to hike across a private ownership. But that included thinning to try to improve the vigor of the trees there so that we can maintain, which I would suggest this should be our long-term, our primary goal, maintain green forest. We really want to do that. We want to have green forest to provide all those values. I don't care what the value is, whether it's carbon sequestration or fire, or green, healthy forest. So we're hoping that maybe at that elevation and that situation, at that aspect, that maybe we can do it. The city's in a challenging position because there's so much variation from the bottom moving up. So I, we have to make a decision, you know? But the thing that I would urge you all to think about is if reduction in forests, if density or thinning is going to work, it will not work very well in the middle of an outbreak. That's well established. You want to be ahead of it, as many years as you can, so that the trees and vegetation that are left have more vigor, have more vigor so that when insects or fire, whatever it is, they're vigorous. There's a good model. It's called human beings. The more vigorous we are, the better we can withstand those, the disturbances that come our way. I'm sorry, extended discussion, but captured in a nutshell.
All right, moving along. Certainly, there's infrastructure at risk. The photo I took during the summer right behind the water treatment plant, a hillside with developing dead, certainly a lot of existing, and it has gotten worse since this picture was taken. We don't want that much fuel around our water treatment plant, perhaps one of the most critical pieces of infrastructure in this entire city. And going along with that, along the Creek, Ashland Creek Corridor, at this discussion with Public Works Director Scott Fleury, historically, the city has gone in and removed trees from the creek, which is kind of antithetical to current thinking about salmon habitat and aquatic habitat. But what is possible, and what we saw even back in the '97 flood, is any wood that gets entrained at high water is going to end up plugging a culvert, washing out a road, going down into the plaza itself, and possibly plugging culverts, bridges, and doing damage. So their policy has been for decades to remove logs that can get up and move in water and so that they don't get entrained and transported downstream into the city where they're going to do more infrastructure damage. Admittedly, Ashland Creek is not, does not have high habitat value in that stretch because we take a lot of water out of it for drinking water for the city. Water flows are pretty minimal in the summer, so habitat is already kind of compromised from the dam down. But that is the section where critical piece of infrastructure, our water treatment plant, we have employees needing to go up and down the road. And certainly in an emergency situation, whether that be a fire or flood, we don't want to have trees falling across the road preventing evacuation or ingress for fire and/or other crews that need to get up into the watershed. This particular picture with the orange ribbons or trees that would fall onto the water treatment plant road... the orange ribbons or trees that would fall onto the water treatment plant road, actually negotiating a deal with the Rogue River Watershed Council as hazard trees to have them removed and donated to a salmon restoration project on Bear Creek and Talon. So, can we take those trees out and give them a higher purpose? I hope so. We're pretty close to being able to make that a reality. Again, another patch of trees. This is just above a very, very, very busy parking area. Hundreds of people park here every weekend, just above the swimming reservoir. That entire skyline of trees is dead, and they are, the way they're leaning, they're going to fall into that parking lot. So, another infrastructure, this time, recreation infrastructure that needs to be protected from falling trees in this case. Okay, I know we're going long. If I can give Lomacatzi a couple of minutes to talk about the summary, we have to make it really short, Jordan. And also, welcome Marco Bay, the Zoom link, if Marco's going to show up up there or just down here.
He's here, yeah.
Hey, welcome Marco. Can you hear me?
We can't hear you, Marco.
You're muted. He's not muted.
Oh, he's having a microphone issue. I hate when that happens in Zoom.
He's not muted. You just can't hear him.
Is it our volume or is it his microphone?
Maybe, yeah.
So, is he not muted?
We're not muted.
Not muted.
He's not muted.
Okay, Jordan may need to narrate because we can't wait too long for Marco. I switch you out, Marty, with Jordan. And you can introduce yourself?
Yeah. Good evening. Mayor, council members, my name is Jordan Anderson. I work for Lomacatzi Restoration Project. I'm a project manager and ecological monitor there. Tonight, we're, thank you for hearing us and for letting us work on this project. It's been really fun. We're going to have, and try to have Marco lead off and explain what we're going through.
We'll see if there's a tech fix. Bring Marco in. If not, then Jordan will just...
Yeah, we can just go through it.
Go on.
Have him try it.
Marco, can you hear us?
Oh, he just...
Oh, we lost him.
We just lost him.
Oh, jeez. Best laid plans.
Yep.
He's gone. Yeah.
We'll let you know if he pops up.
Until he comes back. Okay, all right. Well, you'll jump in.
Here he comes.
Here he comes.
Oh, and he's back.
Marco Bay is Lomacatzi's founder and executive director, and he's currently in Washington, D.C. with a delegation of tribal members from Forbidden Indian Community and Pitt River Tribe. Marco, can you hear us?
Yeah, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Perfect. Can you still not see the slides?
I can't see the slides, but I have it on my side. So, Jordan, you know, hello, Mayor Graham, councilors. Try to be respectful here from a distance. Jordan, you know, maybe you should skip slides two and three and go into the crew's information, and then we'll come back to those two slides.
Yeah.
Oh, well, we don't need the crew's information because I'm doing that, so.
Yeah, we can just talk about the rest of that and come back to it, I suppose.
Let me see. I just want to make sure all the slides were here. Marking updates. And let's go into that. Okay, for some reason, the funding slide is not showing up. I pasted it in, so you have to ad lib that one.
That's fine. All right. Yeah, so I'll just give a quick update. We were collaborating with Fish Chambers at the end of last year about laying out this project. Maybe we can start with...
Yeah, which one do you want to go to?
Start with the map. Marco's the one that talked about our intertribal community.
Okay, there you go. Sorry.
Yeah, so Marco, we're looking at the map right now of the project area. And over the course of about a month, we were able to mark and cruise about 478 acres across Siskiastine Park and five subunits throughout the Ashland watershed encompassing popular trails all the way up to Reader Reservoir. This was done with a variety of crew members working long hours and rigorously following a marking guideline established by Chris and our foresters at Lomacatzi as well. I think you're going to...
Yeah.
And if you, if you can just come in a little closer to that microphone, that'd be helpful.
Oh, terrific. Apologies. Yeah. So, the tree cruise and marking was, again, accomplished in about a month. This included marking trees, live and dead, which we'll go into a little bit, largely like Chris was saying, to remove hazard trees around trails, popular trails, but also, you know, following that marking guideline to remove green trees when necessary across Siskiastine Park and the watershed.
And go to the next one. You know, that one's mine.
We also, I was just going to speak as well to our outreach. We talked, I do have them. Yeah, our comms team, working with myself and Chris, established a simple way of outreach by means of encountering people. Normally, Lomacatzi's projects take place in more remote areas, and this is a very upfront and personal one. And so, I helped with this mark as well, and Chris and Tom Greco, our communications director, designed a simple and elegant business card with a QR code that took whoever found it to a landing page where they could read about the project if they had any questions. We also trained our crew to discuss any important talking points, ecological or project-related as well.
I'm sorry, I'm missing a slide here. Yeah, it's not, it's not before that one either. You just have to...
Pull that one?
I don't know. Somehow, I ended up with two of those.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So, maybe Marco wants to jump into the funding. Marco, are you still there?
Yep, I'm here.
All right. Do you want to jump in quickly in just a couple of minutes to talk about the funding update? I'm sorry, I don't have that slide. And then, about the intertribal training program.
Sure. Yep. Yeah, thank you for the opportunity. You know, with our long history, I'm Marco Bay, Executive Director of Lomacatzi. For those council members that don't know me, our organization just celebrated our 29th year. And in the late 90s, we began our partnership with the City of Ashland, City Parklands, and a long collaboration around the Ashland Forest Resiliency Stewardship Project and the Ashland Forest All Lands Project, that we got a lot of experience in interfacing with the community, a very complex social setting. And then, just real quick, thinking about the landscapes of that 478 acres, and as Marty Mayne mentioned, what's around that is a late succession reserve up in the Ashland watershed, critical ground for the spotted owl, so important to the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service of Region One, which Ashland sits in within Region One, a four-state region, that their top biologists will be visiting the Ashland Forest Resiliency Project in the next month to look at a very ecologically-based project and understanding that this climate resiliency work and insects and disease and resiliency of the forest is a priority that the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, through the Department of Interior's Office of Wildland Fire, have awarded $1 million to Lomacatzi to do work around the Ashland Wui, Wildland Urban Interface, and also around Talon, Phoenix, and Medford, the West Bear All Lands Project that ties to the Ashland watershed. But out of those funding resources, $150,000 of that federal bipartisan infrastructure law funding will go to the Ashland climate adaptation work on the city ground and parks. So, it's important to the agency. In our conversations with them, wildlife biologists, threatened endangered species, conservation, and community wildfire resilience, that that investment will be made to the city through our cooperative agreement with Lomacatzi. And then, layered into that through Justice 40, and everything coming out of these, the bill funding and the IRA dollars has to go to benefit underrepresented communities. We've had a lot of tribal hands on the land on Ashland city lands, on projects around the watershed, and there is an intertribal workforce development program. And that's what we're here to talk about with our Undersecretary of Agriculture, Undersecretary Homer Wilkes tomorrow, and the Climate Corps, and a lot of this investment that Ashland will also be the recipient of. So, just wanted to share that exciting news. There are resources coming. And ecological end results are very important to Lomacatzi, and I know to Chris, to Marty, and to the city. And this is a complicated project, but I think in the end, we're going to have good results. So, I'll pause there, Chris.
Thank you, Marco. Much appreciated. Okay, I think we're going to just leave it at that for Lomacatzi and get through the last slides here. By the numbers, how many trees were marked up there? What is going to be left afterwards? So, this is following on the Good Works Plan, a tree marking guide that I designed. And what you see in the graph are diameters at the bottom. It starts an eight-inch diameter tree, then goes up to 20-plus inches on the far side. Five trees in this case, our example area, Siskiastine Park, all the live trees marked in that particular. So, this is exactly what we would expect from a thinning project. We're thinning out small trees and leaving the bigger trees behind. So, you want to see higher bars on the left and smaller bars on the right. This actually speaks really well to what Marty talked about, and that if we're thinning competing vegetation, trees for their habitat value, for their carbon sequestration, and we want to keep them green and on the landscape. How do we do that? By reducing competition with the smaller trees. So, we thin the... And this was implemented really well by Lomacatzi, as evidenced in the data. I'm excited to see that. Oh, and the average tree diameter marked is 10 and 1/2 inches, actually much smaller than even we marked in the Ashland Forest Resiliency Project, which started out at 12 and went to 13 as we... This is the dead tree side, a little bit larger dead trees. I think trail hazard trees need to be marked that are going to be a little larger side, but still predominantly marking the smaller trees. You still have that same... That means that we are taking the fuel, the smaller diameter, and we're leaving the more valuable ecological structures behind and the, even on the dead side. And then, getting at a question that Counselor Kaplan asked the last time we were here and also in email, you know, it looks like a lot of trees are being marked. What's being left? So, just a quick understanding of that, we measure it in something called basal area. That's the square footage of a tree's surface area. So, if you were to, you know, kind of lift up a tree or cut it and look at, measure the stump at 4 and 1/2 feet above the ground, that's a certain surface area there. You measure, you would measure that, and this is done through instruments. We don't have to cut all the trees down. So, in this example, there would be five square feet of basal area, one, two in the larger tree, and one in one. In the real world, it's a lot more than that in one acre. So, what's being left here, where our data was taken through plots in Siskiastine Park, 139 square feet of basal area is being left, 41 is being cut, so 23% is cut while 77% is being left behind. And this is only in live trees, and we're also leaving dead trees for habitat as well, but they don't count in the basal area numbers. Yes, sir?
Counselor Kaplan.
Yep. So, thanks, Chris. This is really helpful. This is overall. This is overall. This is just Siskiastine Park?
This is just Siskiastine Park because I did all the numbers for APRC presentation earlier, the end of last week. So, I just use that. It's very similar on the Ashland watershed side as well.
And then, of course, there'll be, as you explained earlier, there'll be quite a bit of variation within, on plots, specific plots.
There will be a lot of variation. There'll be areas where we have significant die-off happening. There are areas where we see 60, 70, 80% of trees are already dead and more are still dying. So, there's going to be heavier cut in those areas, lighter cut in the areas where there's more green trees. This would reflect more, this is just green trees, so this doesn't actually show the dead tree removal that's going to go on. But similarly, even going back to this graph, even the dead trees are showing a similar... So, we'll probably see a higher amount of basal area in large trees as well. One thing to point out, if we look at all of the numbers together and total them all up, how many board feet per acre? And the board feet is kind of abstract. It's a tiny little plank, but it's just how things are measured in forestry. 1,810 board feet per acre. I looked up the stats from Ashland Forest Resiliency. We averaged 3,940 board feet per acre. Similarly, I don't know if you remember what it was in 2004, Marty, 2,300 in the city's previous helicopter thinning project 20 years ago. So, by all measures, we are on the low side of what's being removed, in part because some acres are really light and that kind of averages out with the heavy acres. But all in all, this is a pretty light thinning project. And what about wildlife? Somebody recently passed this on to me, Southern Oregon Land Conservancy through Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife. Two species of particular concern, Pacific Fisher and Humboldt Martin. Humboldt Martin is now a federally threatened species. Went through this whole list of habitat enhancements and retention, and we are doing almost everything on this list. And if we're not doing it, we will be doing it pretty soon. So, there's a lot that's already baked into our plans and the implementation of them that's happening to preserve wildlife habitat, including the snag retention and downwooded debris. But still, the theme, and this comes from the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, we really, for habitat preservation, we want green forests. High severity fire is a negative to a lot of species, and we really want to avoid that. In addition to its risk to our community, it is a significant risk to wildlife habitat. If you could read all that, it's negative effects of high severity fire on the left and positive effects of maintaining a low severity fire regular, you know, like things were for thousands of years in our frequent fire forests. This I took straight out of the marking guide. This describes how the Lomacatzi crew went about leaving habitat. We spatially segregate it so that we're leaving better habitat in places where it's going to be used and in places where it's not going to be a threat to firefighters, and we're actually going to be able to use these fire management zones to help manage wildfires, to keep them small, keep them away from important habitat areas, and to make, keep firefighters safe while they're responding. And sometimes, these targets are compromised by having to remove the trail hazard trees, as we discussed earlier. So, we're still in this position of trying to balance these competing objectives, and one of those ways that we do that with habitat and severe, potential for severe wildfire is to spatially designate where these emphasis areas are happening, and we're leaving more, and some places we're leaving less. Okay, getting into the nitty-gritty. Sorry it's taking a while. So, option one to implement the project. So, the project itself involves contracting, and we're going to, you'll hear tomorrow, the contract proposal at the business meeting with Timberline Helicopters. We have revenue on hand that's budgeted in the normal biennium budget. That's $406,000. Lomacatzi, as Marco explained, is bringing some money to the table. Originally, it was $100,000. Now, that's actually bumped up to $150,000. Thank you, Marco and crew. Thank you. Just this afternoon, that threw another $50,000 in, so I wasn't, didn't even have time to capture it. And then, we have the potential log revenue that we're selling trees as a byproduct of the work of reducing fuels and thinning forests. And that contract has now been accepted with a mill in Wyrica Timber Products. They were luckily the, really the only viable bidder in the process, and we are lucky to have one mill that will take the vast majority of everything that would need to be removed from the city forest lands. Potentially, in the full footprint project, that would recoup $686,000 per the mill prices that we have on hand. You can see all the other costs that I've outlined there. Some are directly related to the project, and others are ongoing costs that we fund out of the same pot, like the ODF Fire Protection and the ongoing Fire Patrol for the summer months. And maintaining the work that we do, as we have committed to the Forest Service and our AFR partners, providing funding for prescribed burning, which we've been doing since 2013, I'd shrank that amount down from $350,000 to $100,000 so that we would free up budget for this project, but we still want to maintain that commitment to the rest of the landscape and help with the maintenance costs. And the Forest Service is going to be stepping up, and Lomacatzi bringing money to the table, too. So, in the full footprint project, what we're looking at for filling the gap, as it were, is about $700,000 of city funding. And tomorrow, I suspect you'll hear from our finance director about where that's coming from, and then that will... from, and that was also shared in emails. I've added a 5% contingency on there. There is some contingency built into the work that Lomacotsi did. There's a little bit of added risk in sending dead trees to a mill that they're actually going to get full value. There's already rot going on under the bark of a lot of these trees. We've done all that we can to try to see how much that is, and we will keep doing that through the cutting process. And before a log is even put on a log truck, we will be looking at the cut ends of the logs to try to determine what maybe shouldn't be sent to the mill because it's too rotten and they won't give us, you know, sometimes you could get half price, sometimes you won't get anything. And we don't want to send trees to the mill that don't get any return because we're paying that shipping cost to get them there. So the helicopter cost is shown there, one point, basically 1.3 million, and then associated costs of hauling the logs to Wyrica. Lomacotsi has already done the vast majority of their work. They will still have one or two people available to help administer the project. That $75,000 takes that into account. So one of the items that Counselor Hyatt brought up was, well, we've already committed $250,000 to Lomacotsi, but we're not going to spend all of that. And so that is taken into account and put back into the project budget and comes out in the bottom line. So that would look like this. This is all of the areas being implemented all along the front country of the city, right behind houses, all the way up to Reader Reservoir. That's pretty much all the lower city's ownership, including Siski Mountain Park. Another option, reducing the footprint, reducing the cost. This is, in my opinion, the minimum investment that we need to make in order for fire safety for the community. We're addressing the areas that have the highest amount of tree die-off, the most fuel accumulation right next to the community and in the lower part of our watershed. The costs go, oh, I'm sorry. I actually.
It's the same.
Pushed the same one. Oh, no. Sorry, I got a little cut and paste issue there. The, the, the cost goes down in helicopter logging and this to about $1 million. So we do save a significant amount by going this direction. I apologize. I don't know, got in a rush, I guess. The, from 700,000, it goes down to, I believe, just under 600,000 for this part of the project if we did it with, with reduced footprint. And what that, and I apologize, I'll get you the numbers, the corrected numbers for tomorrow. The correct, the adjusted footprint, if we leave out a portion of it to make it more cost-effective, depending on what we want to do and objectives, it would be leasing out that cross-hatched section at the bottom. And that's basically from just above the water treatment plant up to Reader Reservoir. That is the area with the least amount of tree mortality in it currently. And, but it's also the area that needs, as Marty explained, it needs the most amount of green tree thinning to stay healthy and vigorous and hopefully survive it through the next push of hot temperatures and drought. That's actually addressed in a research publication. Scott Stevens, again, UC Berkeley, you know, talking about, yes, there are clearly some priorities where trees and forests are dying around communities, but we tend not to prioritize thinning green forests to keep them green. I hope that we don't find ourselves so constrained that we can't invest in the green tree thinning that needs to be done to keep our forests healthy and to try to keep them sustainable through the coming years of climate change. And it would, the challenge if we don't do that lower section now, is we've mobilized a huge operation that's very expensive to do the rest of the landscape, and we may not in the immediate future, and at least for a decade perhaps, at the very minimal, have an opportunity to come back and just do that portion. That portion in and of itself really doesn't rise to the top to get a helicopter company interested, to get a mill interested in doing this work here. So there's an economy of scale, and obviously, if you're doing the work now, that's a cheaper cost than it will be in the future, assuming inflation. So that is, I recommend that we go with the full project, but this is, is also another option. And again, I'll get you the, the corrected numbers tonight so you can see them before tomorrow.
Chris, would it help? Because I, I have them here, and what Chris is saying is spot on. The helicopter logging cost drops by about 300K and the long haul drops about 30K. All of the rest of the expenses are sunk cost, so they stay the same, independent of which option may be chosen. So from fuel pile burn all the way down to burn maintenance and fire detection, ODF fire protection, and post-project monitoring, and the tax itself, they all stay consistent through Chris's models.
And can you tell me from that what the, the bottom line is? This is the 701.
Oh, absolutely. Oh, yeah, the end game. With the contingency, the unmet need on the less expensive option is 488,000 total. So it's a difference, not accounting for the 50,000 that Lomacotsi has kindly contributed. It's a difference of about $200,000 between the two with regard to the unmet need.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
So that's what we received, sorry.
Go ahead.
So that, that's what, those are the numbers that we received earlier, but the, the total that we received earlier that is for 100%, you, is different than what you presented? Your presentation is a little bit higher.
This is a little bit different. Yeah. Let me explain.
Basically, it looks like the log haul.
The log haul changed. I got the numbers for the actual log haul. I'd had an estimate in there, and I finally pinned it down with the contractor today. So that's the real log haul cost there.
For the full.
On the screen.
The full one. So in fact, the reduced is going to be a little bit higher.
It's going to be a little bit higher also, but the difference will probably be the same.
And the number of trucks? Because I just did a quick calculation, and the full operation looks like 288 trucks, truckloads. What is it, what would it be in the reduced?
It is about 3,000 board feet per truck. So the, the full project is 836,000 board feet, so divided by 3,000. I'm not.
I just, I, I just divided.
278.
Your log haul cost, 190, 080. Divided by 660, which is the per, on your line, whatever it is, on the log haul. I just divided the total divided by the cost per load, and that came up with 288.
That sounds about right. And that would be divided between two different helicopter drop areas.
Right. Okay, so there are two drop areas.
Yeah.
Where, so the one is going to be the gravel, the quarry?
Yep. One is the city granite pit quarry at the top of Granite Street. The other one is going to have to be at the bottom of Siski Mountain Park. And that's already all approved by, through ODF. And I've talked to the local neighbors. We have legal access on that driveway to haul the logs out. Everybody's aware of what's planned.
Yeah, go ahead. And then we just, we do want to, to see if we can get to the rest of our questions. We have a couple of people who've come to speak to us. So.
Thank you.
Counselor Kaplan?
Yeah, I'm still, I'm kind of focused still on the trucks going out and the routes through town. And I think the, the, when you're talking about it, the bottom of Siski Mountain Park seems like a fairly straight old route out of town towards Wyrica. But the other one from the gravel pit is going to go, what's the route through town? How many?
So they will go out Granite Street, take a right on North Main, and basically, we'll head straight out.
Straight through the center of town.
Yeah, get on Siski Boulevard all the way out to the freeway. Yeah. We, and this is not new in Ashland and AFR. We shipped about 3,000 log trucks worth of wood over about five years. So we, I do know the routes. I know they work. And we, we just, people do need to be patient with the traffic, but it's feasible. The last option is, was requested at the last meeting, what if we did, didn't do the helicopter at all? What if we just fell dead trees and we trimmed them up, got rid of the branches, you know, reduced some of the fire danger? Did my best to estimate what that would cost. If we went through the whole same footprint, it would be about $990,000 at $2,000 an acre. That might be an underestimate, but I think it's a decent average because some will cost more and some of those acres will cost less. We would not get any of the reimbursement from the mill by shipping the logs out. So that goes away. We still have the Lomacotsi grant, which is 50,000 more now. It comes out actually more expensive than option two, just a little bit less expensive than option one, still just to do nothing. And for me, it is very much the least desirable and why? We're leaving an excessive amount of large diameter logs out there that really hinders fire suppression difficulty. Standing dead is really a serious hazard to firefighter safety. Prescribed burning becomes next to impossible due to smoke impacts. We're trying to prescribe burn areas as we've done successfully for over a decade now on city lands. And we add hundreds of tons of fuel, well, maybe not quite much, 50 to 100 tons of fuel onto that landscape. And when we go to do prescribed burning, that is going to cause a lot of smoke, and that's going to end up in the community because by and large, larger material smolders and it gets into the evening time, and that ends up either right downtown or right out in the middle of town, depending on where the burn is. As we're, and now we're working towards a state where we can actually get burning done with fairly little impact on town, and this would be a significant setback to that. And all future work, including the replanting, is, is really hampered and costs go up because for every acre of work that has to be done, crews have to navigate all these fallen logs and trees. It's a hazard to them to be out there with a lot of overhead material fall, potentially falling as things continue to rot. And then if we do have a wildfire, that's probably the most significant negative impact of all. Science is very sound, saying that wildfires with a lot of large woody debris out there in the forest have really significant impacts on wildlife habitat, significant impacts on soils. And the worry about the adjacent community certainly should be paramount for us in having out-of-control fire next to the town that's difficult to put out and is causing the ember storm and putting out a lot of heat and long-duration burning. That's that topic called mass fire that has been really so difficult for communities to deal with where it's happened in, in California primarily. So next steps. If this all moves forward tomorrow after the meeting, we could be starting to cut trees by March 26th. Obviously, we'd be pushing go on a lot of public outreach as that would happen. The helicopter would arrive on the heels of the cutting, probably by mid-April, maybe a little bit earlier, depending how the cutting goes. We will have to start closing trails. I could, I can get the crew to start cutting in places that don't impact trails, and so we can get as far as we can into that without closing a lot of trails and irritating a lot of people. But at some point, it just has to happen for public safety. We really cannot have people going into the area at all. It's not a matter of you can't be in there during the day and they're working, you just can't be in there at all because trees can fall even in the middle of the night. Work would happen seven days a week from approximately 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM following the city noise ordinance. And we'll prioritize the busiest trails in the lower watershed first so that they can get done and open. Done a lot of outreach with the trail community, and that's what they would like to see so it has the least impact on them in the busiest time of the season, which is May. And then the cleanup as needed would start as the helicopter wraps up, and that's where Lomacotsi crews would be out there doing work. Some of the work we've actually, in this scenario, we've shortcut that timeline. The helicopter company, Timberline, would actually take, and especially on the lower watershed side where we've got lots of room at the landing where they're dropping the logs, they'd actually take the whole tree, the top, the limbs, everything intact, and deal with all that slash on the landing rather than having to have a crew come back, you know, incur a lot of expense and a lot of time to do the cleanup in the forest. So there's an advantage in the way that things have panned out with the contract, doing whole-tree yarding that minimizes that closure period. Okay, we've already had a lot of questions and discussions, so I apologize for the length of it. Hopefully, a lot of those questions have already been answered.
Well, you know, this is a really complex question, and it is, as you mentioned, Counselor Dale, this is why, a big part of why many of us love living here. And so if it takes us a little bit more time, then it takes us a little bit more time.
Great.
We're not going to worry about that. We do have two people who would like to speak. So what I'd like to do is bring them up, and then counselors, I'll give us all a chance to answer, to ask any final questions of staff. So we have two speakers, Eric Navickis and John Marer. Did I get that right? Marer?
Mar.
Marer? Okay. And you can both come up at the same time if you like or one after the other. And let's, let's do four minutes. And Alyssa will give you a chime at, when you have 20 seconds left, and then she'll give you a double chime when you have, when your time is up, at which point, please complete your sentence. Does that, is that enough time for both of you?
Sure, yeah, that's plenty.
Okay. Go ahead.
Yeah, I just started thinking, Chris, and Ashland Fire Department for the work they're doing on this. And Ashland Fire Department for the work they're doing on this. You know, Chris mentioned the history of fire and management of the watershed. I think one of the critical issues that we haven't talked about is the history of flooding and landsliding as well in our municipal watershed. And during the floods of '64, '74, '97, we saw massive landslides even in these areas. And these are steep slopes with very eroded soils. And, you know, after the '74 flood, the city was actually at loggerheads with the Forest Service over fire management projects because of the severe landsliding they'd seen and the amount of sediment in the reservoir. Granted, this is below the reservoir, I understand that. But the same issues apply. And they hired Montgomery Engineering out of Portland to look at the, the problem. And they, the engineering firm clearly said that they should remove logging from the project and from all fuels reduction projects, and that the Forest Service had been inclined to justify numerous aggressive projects in the name of fire management, and that the best way to deal with fire problems is to remove logging because it always incentivizes taking out more trees. They create more problems to the soils and sedimentation to our reservoir or landsliding and soil loss and ultimately unproductive forests. Not that I agree with the COGAP concept of keep Oregon green and productive. I think that that's a wise use policy. Keeping forests green is not necessarily a healthy forest. It's more complicated than that. Again, I've brought up the issue of falling logs, and I'd really hope that Chris can put those spreadsheets of costs up on the website tonight so that we can review them because I don't see how the deficit of the timbering can result in costs that are equivalent in the long run. I'm not, he seems to be increasing costs somewhere, and I hadn't had an opportunity to look at those spreadsheets. I really can't talk about it. But as a member of the Budget Committee, you know, it's really concerning to see another 3/4 million or at least half a million dollar project that was unallocated through the budget process. So that, that's very concerning. You know, as far as fuel loads, scientific evidence is really showing that the overriding issues with a fire are temperature, time of day, and wind conditions, and that fuel loads aren't really that significant when it comes to fire. And whether or not we follow these trees, leave them on the ground, or haul them out, I think we're looking at a fire risk that's equivalent regardless. I think leaving the trees in the forest floor, working to retain soils, and to stabilize these steep hillsides is our best bet. And I think we can reduce the cost that way, especially if the project were really designed around that, not putting an equivalent project to this timber project where we've incentivized extraction to cover costs. You know, those are my real concerns. Again, you know, there are multiple issues besides fire. We are also looking at the long-term problem of soil instability around the city of Ashland, and maintaining trees on the forest floor, downwooded debris will have the impact of stabilizing these soils. And I think that the fire management issue can be dealt with and needs to be dealt with by simply dropping the trees and leaving them on site. Thank you.
Thank you. John? Marer?
Yes, thank you, kind council people for being here and listening to me this late in the evening. I'm here to support the project that you've just been presented. I'm here to support the project that you've just been presented. I have lived in Ashland since 1975. I'm a biologist for my initial degrees, but I took a fork on the road that took me to orthopedic surgery, and started Ashland Orthopedics, presided over the staff at Ashland Community Hospital. I've been in that seat, with the school board presiding over that YMCA. Been here a long time. And I have lived as a steward next to Siski Mountain Park. And I'm going to talk about Siski Mountain Park, because it's my baby. The inference was, folks living up in the, in the interface are a part of the problem, and I first want to correct that. The amount of work myself and other people who live in the interface have done to protect the watershed is unbelievable, okay? I've just got done taking out 500 trees from my property, some of them green, some of them green to be sure, sipping a little sap, I've got forehead beetles working on them, and every month that goes by that that tree is not dealt with, its commercial value is sinking. I can tell you the number of trees a Boise Cascade wouldn't take, because a forehead beetle had infected it. You have a, we're really on a time crunch. You all knew that, I don't need to tell you that. However, to make it work, to make it work, make the numbers work, you're going to have to move quickly. You're going to have to take some green trees, absolutely. I want you to know that there is a significant fire risk. I sit every day watching that 180 acres, the city's biggest park, and I watch for little curls of smoke that are coming up there in August, in June, September. And I'll go up there and find someone who needs to have a fire just to stay warm, they say. We have a problem, we've pushed people here and there, they're going to end up. I know they end up, because that's where they are. They're in my neighborhood. Kindly talking, it's 100 degrees today, I don't think you need this fire, and it meets with different responses. But it's going to happen. There is going to be a massive fire up there. You talk about soil stabilization, you talk about Reader Reservoir, and the contaminants you're going to see when that fire hits, you're going to need a whole new water system. Big spring is waiting for you, but this is a huge project. I don't mean to get so emotional about it, but I watch it every day, and I've watched it for 40 years. I've watched trees, I've done all my own harvesting. Marty Mayne believes everything he says. He's the real deal. And I've used Marty, he's guided me, and my chainsaws, and my mules, and I survive. But what has happened in the last three years, there's no way I could keep up with the dead and dying trees. My Douglas firs are just big ones, 42-inch breast-type trees. I couldn't believe that big one, my biggest, when it, when it red-flagged out on me. This is happening now, I haven't seen this in 40 years. You've got the data, it's real data. Southern Oregon isn't going to support Douglas firs below 4,000 feet. I just don't think it's going to happen in the next couple thousand years. They'll come back, and they'll adapt, but it's not going to happen now. But on your shift, there's going to be a massive, I mean, big-time fire. You talk, that was a minimal fuel load going down, '99, in September, three years ago. Anyway, point made. You're talking to someone who's lived up there for 40 years, I've watched every tree, I value every tree. It's time to do what's right for the forests, and there's going to be some trees that have to be lost to make it, to make the bigger forests survive. Thanks for your time. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. So staff, if you can come back up. Are there any final questions from the council? So I would like to take up the question of soil stability, because we know, we know what the granitic soils in, on this mountain do, and how they move, and how they move in response to water. And we know that alongside the more extreme temperatures and the greater fire risk, we also have greater risk of larger downpours, larger precipitation events coming in on top of these soils. And so how, how, how does this project relate to our work to try to stabilize the soils in the event of these large precipitation events?
I'll invite Marty back, because he's dealt with this issue so many years, on private land and city land, but I'll give you my take first, and if it's different, Marty, feel free to chime in. We've worked with the same geologists from the state and locally. A great geologist, Billy Hicks, who did a lot of work for the city, passed away just recently, so I just want to honor him by saying that. And he contributed significantly to our understanding in Siski Mountain Park, and the lower city watershed. In his work, that was really fundamental to our understanding of what's going on out there. I think it's potentially faulty to say that we can stabilize this watershed. Decomposed granitic soils have a, have for eons and eons eroded. That's what our landscape does. We cannot prevent it from doing that. We can prevent surface erosion, and we should work on that, where we find that is an issue, seldom an issue in my experience, except where there's like a significant machine work, or something that's gone on, that has taken all the soil cover off of the landscape, not something we would typically see in forest management. The more deep-seated landslides that happen at depth, the ones that we saw during '97 that closed Granite Street, ended up in the water treatment plant, were primarily drainage issues from road systems. They were not treatment-oriented. That happened in various places throughout the watershed. Roads are probably the most common source of landslides, because of the way they direct water. We can talk about that in our Community Wildfire Protection Plan, and needing to have a roads analysis for the entire watershed. I totally support that. We have had site-specific visit from the state engineering geologist for all of Oregon's forest lands on this project. He went over the whole plan, he came down here, we examined areas that were potentially at risk. And that risk has to be balanced between, again, the fire risk, and what would happen to slope stability and soil stability after a significant fire, versus, do we just leave the fuel on site to, you know, protect from surface soil erosion? It's not an easy issue. Lomacotzi followed some strict direction during the project, and only marking trees in certain percentage of slopes, per ODF's direction, totally staying out of other areas altogether. There's very detailed mapping using LiDAR. We can see, you know, down to less than one foot in elevation. The maps are really good, the technology is really good. And all that, all the recommendations from the ODF geologist who studied, has been down here numerous times, either on projects that Marty has been fielding in adjacent private lands, and/or on the city lands themselves. We have followed those recommendation, well, regulations and recommendations as close as we possibly can, and trying to err on the side of caution. While reflecting that, we can't leave a lot of fuel out there and have a severe fire, and then see the significant erosion that would happen post-fire, with especially a lot of large logs on the ground that burn really deeply, on a high temperature, and for long duration, which is really damaging to soils, and can create what's called hydrophobic soils, where soils that resist any water trying to permeate through them. And those historically have resulted in large amounts of debris moving down slope into communities and watershed, and municipal water sources as well. Marty, anything you want to add to that?
Just one.
Marty, if you can come into the microphone, please.
I was relaxing. We talked about multiple values, and when I first got hired, I was told very clearly the value, the primary value is water. And I was like scratching my head, well, who's ever managed land primarily for water? At that time, very few. But it became clear to me very quickly, well, city, you better do something about soils. And so the gentleman that Chris mentioned, Billy Hicks, mapped the entire city ownership. I don't think that had ever been done on, on any private land. I'd be very surprised. But the city did it, financed it. The whole place was rated for potential landslide possibilities, two different systems that he used. And since that time, we've used that. And we did the spatial work that I referred to earlier, and said, okay, these areas are off-limits because of that priority. So the city actually has a very, very long history of addressing that issue, and in amongst all the other values. So my hat's off to the city. And the city should take credit for doing that kind of work that long ago. Impressive.
Councilor Kaplan, thank you.
Yeah, thanks very much, Mayor. Really much along the same lines, and the focus on soils. And I know that the addendum to the Ashland Forest Plan, you know, calls out soils as needing, you know, much greater attention in the next update. That's some time away. And I guess my question really is, we're talking about a substantial sum of money right now to do this. This is called Phase 1. Through the end of this fiscal year, which, you know, we still have another year in the biennium, pretty much zero out the resources that we have for this, what is it that's going to be necessary, and what should we be doing in next year, the next fiscal year, having to do with, well, any more plans that you have for this time next year, with further, further cutting perhaps? But then most, my tension is turning towards replanting. And I asked a question in my email, you know, when are we going to get towards replanting? What are we going to be replanting with? How does that, you know, how's that all going to work? Because that's a much more complicated effort.
Thank you for asking that question. I appreciate it. Didn't get to putting a slide in there for that. Phase 2 will be the replanting phase. And what we're going to do is get through this initial project, and then do the monitoring, see what we've got with the data post-project. A lot of that data we already know. And then get together with our partners, Southern Oregon Land Conservancy, actually has a lot of knowledge and resources for revegetating and understanding plant communities. They've already said that they would jump in, they do have the Conservation Easement on Siski Mountain Park, so they have a vested interest in the outcomes of this, especially those areas that have undergone significant tree mortality. They've lost 60, 70, 80% of the overstory trees. That environment is already changed, and so we need to go in there, assess those areas, figure out what the best species are for the future, that we can start planting now. We'll come up with a planting plan. We'll consult with botanists at the Forest Service, and anybody else that could help us come up with a plan for the replanting. Lomacotzi has some significant resources and labor, and connections to nurseries that can grow out the kind of plants that we need for the future. You know, and in addition, not just trees, but the grasses, all those really important things that cover the soil, and prevent surface soil erosion, and prevent, or provide wildlife habitat as well. So we'll be doing a pretty significant deep dive into what the planting plan is, and we'll assess where we are by next spring. If we have some budget money, it looks like it'll be available in our own budget, then we'll start that process. We might have to wait till the start of the next biennium to fund some of that work. Lomacotzi has offered to bring some of it to the table. So I hope we can get started on that revegetation before the end of the biennium. But if not, we'll be on it quickly after that, when we have money in pocket again. But it is certainly, it is the future of our forests that we are planting now, for future generations, and there needs to be significant thought put into. And there's a lot of science going on about what to do with burned areas, and climate change, and revegetation. So it's, it is a big challenge that the whole scientific community is looking at. How can we grow better trees that are going to be well-adapted to forests, to the conditions of the future? So there's local research going on, regional research, and there's a lot of science that's going to go into informing what we do on the revegetation front.
Thank you. Any last questions? Well, thank you for your presentation. Thank you, everyone who has come to participate in this discussion. It's critically important, this, this, this work that we're talking about doing, and I appreciate everyone's time. Meeting is adjourned.
Thank you for making the time. Appreciate it.